Folks, we're all set. We'll get started. Can we stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the 1936 America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Legal boulders of Highgate School District are hereby notified and warrant to meet the transact following business on Tuesday, November 7, 2017 at the Highgate School Gym at 7:00 p.m. Article 1, should the Highgate Town School District with other members of Franklin Northwest Supervisory Union propose to the Vermont Board of Education to maintain the current operation of the Franklin, Highgate, MVU, Sheldon, and Swanton School Board, which is an alternative governance structure, as defined in Act 4649 law. Kind of a motion, please. Anybody that masks them, second. The only rules I guess we have is for discussion. When you stand, just please give your name. One for questions, please. Discussion. Yep. Absolutely. Sorry.
So, first of all, thank you so much for coming. We feel that this is a really critical vote for our community, and it's great to see this number of people here. So, thank you so much. The school board is made up of Nola Gilbert, Richard Flint, Chris Shepard, David Roddy, and I'm Connie Buer. Our superintendent is here, he's back there, and he is Winton Goodrich. And if you don't know who our moderator is, did you identify yourself?
Kyle.
Kyle Lothian. Questions? Well, how about if I just say a few things, okay? It's short, I promise. For all of you know, I can go on, but anyway. So, can I share this with you? Thanks. All right. I hope you all have a copy of the summary, the executive summary of the 74-page report.
Does anybody need a copy of their report?
So, Act 46 slash Act 49 was established in June of 2015. And the purpose of that was to improve the governance of schools, which refers to school boards, to create equity among schools with the education that is offered and to do it at a cost that the taxpayers in the community can afford. In June, in that year, the school boards from the Franklin Northwest Supervisory Union, which is made up of the schools Highgate, Franklin, Swanton, Sheldon, and MVU. We knew we needed to know more information about this, and so we started a study. It costs $5,000, the state paid for it, and it created more questions than it did answers. And the committee had concerns about the objectivity of the consultant who was hired to take a look at what consolidation would mean. None of us were happy with that. We knew that we had to do something because the state requires us to, so the next step was to form a 706 committee. But we didn't like the rules the 706 committee required us to do. Number one, they wouldn't allow representation from MVU. Number two, representation on the committee would be based on the population of the towns. And number three, it committed us to doing something, we had to make, we had to do something that would, the state would be happy with us doing with consolidation. We said, no, we don't want to do that. So, we decided that we were going to do our own independent study. And I just want to review what the, again, what the five goals back to 46 are. And it's in your executive summary on page number one. Or page number two, sorry. So, number one, provide substantial equity in the quality and variety of educational opportunities. Number two, lead students to achieve or exceed the state's education quality standards. Number three, to maximize operational efficiencies through increased flexibility to manage, share, and transfer resources with the goal of increasing the district-level ratio of students to full-time equivalent staff. Number four, to promote transparency and accountability. And number five, to deliver education at a cost that parents, voters, and taxpayers value. We, the Franklin Northwest Supervisory Union met. Together, we decided we were going to do an independent survey that would be governed by these five goals. Because whether there's an Act 46 or not, these are five goals that every school system, and I don't care what states you're in, ought to be looking at as far as the job the schools are, are needed to do. So, we went to our independent committee, and on the front here of this, of this handout, you'll see who the members are. Bob Berger from Franklin, he was the chair, he's done a wonderful job. Don Collins, representing MVU, and he replaced Bob Irish, who finished out his school board term in February of 2017. Tobias McGuire from Swanton, Jason Moncarl from Sheldon. And we hired a facilitator, Terry O'Shea, to help us make this, put this all together. And we, we've had two meetings and some more than that for, since last August, I think, we started. Our goal was to see how we can meet the, those, the goal, the goal of the committee was to see how we could meet those five goals, and did it take us having to change our school board structure to meet those goals? And so, we started. And we examined a whole host of things. We examined, because the state had asked, well, are there other schools that you could have a, merge with? So, we had people go to Elberg, the Elberg School Board, the Bakersfield School Board, and the Georgia School Board, and said, hey, you know, we have some structures like you do, are you interested in talking with us about merging? None of them accepted our invitation. We researched, we researched a whole host of things. And the bottom line was, and this is what we're asking you to do, is the bottom, we re, we determined that what Act 46 is asking us to do is well within the ability of our local boards to do without having to consolidate school boards. And that's what we're asking you to, whether you think that, if you think that's a good idea, then you vote yes, and if you think we should investigate more along the line of mergers, then you would vote no. And you should probably have a lot of questions, but that's a quick summary. Questions? Mrs. Rainville.
My question is, that's due to individual boards, but a yes vote means that we stay individual boards, which counts in that way.
A yes vote means that we stay individual boards, and we, and there is, there are lots of things in here that talk about how we're going to meet each one of those five goals. And it's going to require some change, it's going to require working together. We do a lot of what Act 46 already, we do that already without having to do that. So, a yes vote means keep local government board structures and work on meeting the goals of 46 together.
This is the second question. On page two, in the bold at the bottom, it says, ensure we recommend an enhanced SC and elementary board structure.
Okay, so, on page two, which, where, Kelly?
The paragraph where it's in bold.
Yes.
The second one says, ensure we recommend an enhanced SC and elementary board structure.
Okay, so, we, what?
Typo?
Yeah, no, no, is it a typo? It's a typo. That's a typo. My ears don't work well, so I have my translators.
Butch. Yeah, let's make sure I'm not...
Okay, so, I'm going to identify you as James Hoagland.
Okay, I'm just, um, I just want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding anything. It, it seems like a win-win, right? Because you get to maintain the local control and awareness on the board level, but you also get to, with the plan that the state is making you have your own plan to go to board level. That's going to make it easier for, you know, meeting those, so it's not going to mean you can't meet the state's mandate and maintain that global board direction.
That is our understanding of it. And Act 46 wouldn't have allowed this, but last year, the legislature created Act 49. And here it is, 56 pages. And what that allows us to do is to do an enhanced alternative board structure, and that's what we're doing. Local boards stay the same, but the work that we're going to do is going to get us to the point where we, we're meeting the goals of the state. Does that answer your question, James? It's a win-win.
Yeah, and it sounds like that, based on the, all the groundwork you were talking about earlier, that this is the next logical step from the board's, you know, perspective in terms of how the board...
Well, the committee feels that way, and the Franklin Northwest Supervisory Union Board approved the report.
So, it just makes a lot of sense. Thank you. I just want to make sure I wasn't missing anything.
So, my question is, I'm a, all my house special needs, and my question is, if it goes over to like the other side, when the state will be more into the special needs stuff? I think they should keep the school board the same, because there's a lot of kids who are, have a lot of disabilities. It's not just ADHD, there's autism, there's Down syndrome, and I'm afraid if it goes to the other side, the state will have more control.
What do you mean by other side?
Like the other side, like they say, let's say it's not where people vote, like, say that all the towns merge together, the state will get more involved with the special needs, is that having local control by the towns with the special needs kids?
That's a really good concern, Heather, I'm glad you mentioned it. Act 46 slash Act 49 requires us to provide the best education we can ha, we can, to all students. All students. And so, we, I, I believe that, well, the state's pretty involved in special education anyway. But I, I think that you're right.
I've got a question. Let's get down to the nuts and bolts of this. What's it going to cost? Because I already, right now, on my copy tax, I pay way too much for education. I want to be like, what the dollars and cents is for this? I want to know what's it going to cost?
Okay, and that's a fair question. When we first started it back with the $5,000 study, the state, the Agency of Education was supposed to come up with a formula that you can plug in your supervisory union structure, and ours is one, seven through 12 school, three K through six schools, and one, well, pre-K through six, and one pre-K through eighth grade. They created formulas for lots of different structures, but they never created one for our structure. So, we were never given the opportunity to plug in some of the numbers that other districts were able to do. So, what we did, and again, Terry O'Shea has been wonderful, we took three years of when we could, if we had merged, and this is in the data of the, of the report, and we took three years, and if we merged, what would the per pupil cost be per school, and what would the tax rate be for schools? And generally, without being specific to each one, Franklin's would go up a lot, Highgate would go up some, Miscosway would go up some, and Swanton would go down.
That's if we merged.
Yes, that's if we merged. And, and that was also with incentives. But the opportunity for incentives no longer exists. Unless the state wants to negotiate to get us to do something, but who knows what they'll, you never know what they'll do. Mr. Goodrich, did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir.
I understand any, uh, she and I listen to the non-finding call.
You're right.
Tomorrow, the state can come in and say you heard me anyway.
So, I'll tell you the timeline. Ultimately, yes, what you said is true. When we started this, we agree, the committee agreed that we wanted to go back to our communities, because the first time around, we went to our communities too. And Swan, Franklin had a really good turnout, and the turnout in the other three towns was not good. So, so we had heard antecdotally how people in Highgate felt, but we didn't have any hard evidence for that, and the other towns would say the same. And so, we said, we're going to do a report, come to a conclusion, and then we want to go back to our, our towns for an advisory vote to see if they support our thinking, or are we all out to lunch? And we all agreed to do that, and everybody's doing that today. In January, after we hear the results of what towns have said, and after we do some tweaking of the report based on our information meetings, in January, the Franklin, the SU Board goes before the State of Education, and we make our case. And we are hoping that because of the votes that we have had, and that's why it's, I'm so glad to see all of you here, that it, the, the State Board of Education will see, it's just not the committee, it's just not the school boards, it's the townspeople who are saying, this is what we support, this is what we value in education, and this is what we want to keep. Now, if it goes the other way, then we'll have to say, we'll have to tweak the report some more. Does that help? So, so when the state's...
I want to get a deal out of this, a law, somebody else can get an interest.
Yep.
You know, Swanton could be paying more, they got streetlight businesses, if you're Highgate, that Franklin, that, they're paying higher taxes. They got a whole lot of land. What have we got, you know, we got some, huh? I'm a million, they owe in taxes, I'll sell through. McCallum, go on, I'll do there.
Well, you know, the tax base of each of the towns is important, because we know that affects our tax rate. I mean, the grant list tells you what you can raise money on in taxes, and the larger your grant list, the better it is. And, and, you know, Highgate doesn't have a lot of business. We have a lot of residential property. Tim?
I still don't feel that you did answer the question.
About the state?
No, about how much is it going to cost? Is how, if you, the answer that it was going to go up if we merged, what's the cost if we stayed the same? Is it going to up a lot, or is it going to be about equal?
If you give me a minute, I'll look and find.
All right.
Now, where's my whole... That's not it. No, I don't think it's, that's not it, that's not it. Okay, tax rates off now, can we prove something? Well, I can give it for previous years. I'm not going to be able to give it to you for FY18, but I'm pretty sure I have it here for other stuff. Maybe I can give it to you for FY18. Well, it's based on the numbers we have now. Mr. Goodrich, do you know which page this is on? I've got consolidated. That's not it.
Highgate consolidated.
You have to go back, but you're in town. This is if merged.
That's merged with incentives.
Yep.
And incentives are out.
And this is with incentives. So, no, no incentives.
The bottom line, it'll be cheaper to stay as we are. It's the second one now.
Yeah, I think it is. My pages are not numbered, these should be numbered. Okay.
I would just say that, um, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of variables in that, yeah.
Okay. I think it's right here. I think here is consolidated, and here is not. Okay. So, here are some numbers. So, for FY18, which is what we're in now, Highgate's budget, educational budget, is And that number comes from the state, so that may not include some revenue that we get from the state. Okay. Our pure pupil, the number of pupils we have is, equalized pupils is 322.47. That gives us a per pupil cost of $13,726.77. So, $13,700. If we were to consolidate, our, our per pupils would stay the same, the consolidated cost per pupil would go to... Would go up to $13,886.55. The preconsolidated cost was $13,726, so it goes up $159.78 per pupil. So, then you multiply it times your per pupil rate.
You got Patty Bridge in the back there.
But just what I don't understand is, if we consolidate, you go, you're calling, only winners here would be Swanton, because you lose controllers of board, you lose control of our tax dollars that we pay, we have some control of it in the town. And Swanton would go wherever they want, because they can't, you're the vote, so our first, and Highgate's going to get nothing, Swanton would get everything, and you pay more for Swanton, have more than we'll be having. In my opinion, that's the idea.
I, so, when the committee looked at this, we looked to see, okay, so if we do consolidate, for some of us, that it is going to cost us more money, what are we getting for that bigger bang for the buck? And, and we found that we would get, that we aren't getting more for that, we can do what, we can do as much as, we can do what we're doing, or even better, without doing that.
You got a question in here?
You're right, Patty.
And then we're going back.
Put it simply, you're right.
So, if we merge, what would the structure of the school board look like, and how would the vote happen to get people on the school board?
That's a great question. So, the structure of the school board would, and it depends on how, what schools merge, okay? And that depends on the structures that they have, and, and there are a whole lot of nuances to that. And so, you go by the town's population, and it depends on how many school board members your Articles of Agreement say you're going to have. And I think you can go five, seven, nine, I think you need to be an odd number so that you don't have a tie vote. And because Swanton's population is greater than Highgate's and Franklin's together, they will have the majority of the school board representation. Now, the voting would happen similar to what we do for MVU. So, when you, we vote for MVU board members, you have candidates from Franklin, candidates from Highgate, and candidates from Swanton. And, and people have honored the original agreement of how rubber segmentation was going to be for MVU, and so it has continued, three, three, and three, but it could change. It could change.
We have a question in the back.
So, if you gave us for three years, it was for Act 46, right?
It's for Act 46 slash Act 49.
Or proposal, if you modify, right, as we're voting on today, that should not change our budget.
That is correct.
Yeah, we save us $100,000, we always say, we're worried, and we're voting Monday.
Correct.
It would be exempt if you're proposing instead of on that. It would be acceptable if you're proposing instead of on that.
But, but, so you said, and I just want to clarify, because I don't want to hang up from March, you said budget, and the 4.9 million that Connie just said may or may not be our budget that you proposed in March. We are still in the very early planning phases of that budget, so we do not know what the budget will look like. I mean, we'll know in January, when we come to the town report, but tonight, we can't say that you say yes, and we're going to give you a $4.9 million budget in March. Can't say that.
Right, but, but, our budget is, if you vote on our own budget, I...
Right.
So, essentially, what that is saying is, um, that, and ladies and gentlemen, this is really hard to put a value on, but the question is, do we want to make our own decisions about our school? Do we want to make our own decisions about the education that our school offers? Do we want to make decision, our own decisions about buildings and grounds? Do we want our own budget? And do we want our own board? And for us to do that, then we need to keep our own board structure. It's up.
Right, make a motion, move the question.
Question's been moved. Okay, we go to vote, all right.
Wait, wait, can we?
Yeah. Just to be sure, a yes vote is to continue with our local board, and a no vote would be to look further into going into the merger process, okay?
I ask for paper ballot?
Seven hands, we have a paper ballot. Paper it is, paper, we'll vote the paper.
I don't believe anybody anymore. My issue is at 1:30.
Uh, the vote's been counted. Out of 104, 104 votes cast, we have 103 yes and one no. I would say that was a pretty overwhelming yes. The yeses have it. 104 votes cast.
Oh, we can't hear you.
104 votes cast, 103 were yes, one no. Ms. Bjork.
Again, I would, I can't tell you how happy I am that we got the, that you guys came, you cared enough about, not that you don't care, but it's hard to come out at night. Thank you so much for coming. This is a huge, a huge step that we're taking, and we'll keep you, we'll let you know what the state board does to us when we go there.
Could we just have a motion for adjournment? Second, eyes. Have a safe trip home, folks.